Our next speaker, please, Jimmy Prude. Last call. Moving on to the next speaker, please, Allison Burke.
Hi, I'm Ally Burke, I'm from Trumbull Elementary. I've said this a few times, but I'm just gonna reiterate. The utilization data is not accurate for Trumbull Elementary. Even CPS has acknowledged that their formula did not include guardrails for special education. Our school's 37 percent special education. We have 146 students currently in our SPED program, and those children's progress depends on consistent and routine behavior. Moving those children and splitting them is detrimental to their progress. We currently have a vertical articulation plan, and we can graduate those students from pre-K all the way through eighth grade. The network is now pushing to implement a program that will combine multiple SPED disabilities into one classroom under the guise of cross-categorical. We know that this is happening because they realize that there's not enough room at our welcoming schools to implement autism and TMH cluster program. CPS originally claimed that our school needed over $16 million in capital improvements. They then verbally went down to $14 million, and recently brought that down to $11 million. It was all based on the same audit where we were told $4 to $5 million. We have a new principal, we have a newly-elected local school council, and we've been embraced by a supportive community. This leadership with a grant, also a grant from Roosevelt University, we've seen our test scores increase dramatically. And initial data supports another large increase in our ISAT scores this year. We have a long-term improvement plan and expect the upward trend to continue. Andersonville is one of the most racially and economically diverse neighborhoods in the entire United States. Young, urban, professional families like my own are flocking there because we love the diversity, we love the small-town feeling.
Ms. Burke, excuse me, can you please conclude?
The number-one factor, economic factor for a neighborhood is families with children, and the number-one factor parents use to pick a neighborhood is a strong public school. Pierce is a wonderful school, but it's at capacity. Its capacity is 1080, and they're almost at, over 1020 now.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, our next speaker, please.
If this school closes, if this neighborhood is gonna continue to grow and flourish, we must have another walkable school. We live over a mile from every other school.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Our next speaker, please, Heather Yutzi, followed by Jackson Potter, speaker number six. And after they speak, the next group will be the individuals from Dupre, and that will be speaker number seven, Magdalene Thurman, followed by speaker thirty-nine, please, Alexander Roy, and then speaker fifty, Teri Sumra.
I'm Heather Yutzi, the principal of Belling Elementary, speaking on behalf of the parents, staff, and students of my school. Belling is operating at 139 percent capacity, which means I have several hundred students more in my building than it was designed to hold. In fact, I have 200 more students enrolled today than when we were at ideal capacity in 2005. Young families with children are choosing to move into our neighborhood and enroll their children in public schools. What a wonderful problem to have, a great school drawing families into the neighborhood. But I'm here today because I need your help. At every school action hearing, we have spoken persistently and politely about overcrowding, not only at our school, but at surrounding schools. We regularly shared this map showing overcrowding in our immediate neighborhood. Ten schools near Belling using your formulas are operating overcrowded using CPS calculations, and there are ten more that are operating at over 100 percent capacity, which you do not consider overcrowded. That means 20 schools have more children than they were designed to hold in my immediate area. With limited resources and funding, we believe that existing buildings should be used wisely. The majority of children in our area attend crowded Level 1 and Level 2 neighborhood schools. Only two schools in our area are underutilized, and in both cases, we believe that you could make a better choice. Aspirahoggin and Marshall Middle School both have empty seats and should be converted immediately into neighborhood schools to relieve overcrowding and address long-term population trends. First, Aspirahoggin Charter School is far underutilized and is underperforming. Their charter should be revoked and that building converted into a neighborhood school. Redrawn boundaries could relieve overcrowding of four to eight schools by this action alone. Second, Marshall Middle School is being co-located with Disney Two, a magnet program that is not a neighborhood school. Disney true draws in students from outside of our area. That co-location plan essentially takes an overcrowded region and makes it more overcrowded. Disney Two can easily be relocated to a different part of the city.
Ms. Yutzi, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can relocate an alternate program like a magnet school, but you can't relocate a neighborhood filled with, filled overcapacity with children.
Thank you, our next speaker, please, Jackson Potter.
Good morning. So, I've been coming to these meetings for a while since my school was on the closing list in 2005. And behind me, this whole row used to be available to parents and community to speak about what the problems are. It seems very anti-democratic to now give this to board functionaries. We met with Bank of America yesterday, and executives at Bank of America said they'd be willing to renegotiate the toxic swaps if CPS asked them to do it. But it's not even been requested! And that's $36 million! You've said that you have to close schools for budgetary reasons, and you haven't even asked to see money that exists on the table. It's really unconscionable.
Hello, my name is Magdalene Thurman. I'm a concerned parent who children attend CPS, two of them attend Dupre. I am fighting to keep schools open in my community and throughout Chicagoland. As a member of Bickerdyke, I have been working to support a plan that merges Van Humble and Dupre schools instead of closing them. This will keep the only public school in East Humble Park open and allow low-income children the proper resources in their neighborhood. Two of the CPS board members came out to Van Humble and Dupre to hear this plan. I want you to vote yes in favor of merging Van Humble and Dupre school. Everyone has a right to education. Everyone should be free, education should be free, at least in elementary and fundamental stages. Every child deserves to have a well-rounded public school in their community that is safe and easy for students to travel to. Small classes like at Dupre and Van Humble, students get hand-on instructions and direct interact with teachers. Anyone who support school closing make a destructive decision that denies our students their right to education, destroy low-income African-American, Hispanics, special-needs children's future, also keep students in our community in poverty. You are living proof, that sitting right here in front of me, that education is essential for success.
Ms. Thurman, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Can I just say one more thing, please?
Please.
When you make decisions, keep in mind that closing schools leave neighborhoods ruined, houses devalued, children and teachers are displaced in communities where resources are needed the most. Schools are safe havens for students. Just like you stood up and touched your heart for the Pledge of Legions, vote from your heart and allow children freedom and justice.
Thank you, Ms. Thurman. Our next speaker, please.
CPS School Board and the city to make decisions about Chicago public schools that impact our children's lives.
Our next speaker will be Alexander Roy.
Good afternoon. The mayor yesterday said that he's tired of students dropping out and failing math and reading. So am I. But my students don't drop out, and they don't fail math and reading. In fact, my school's not even on probation. The school that you want to send my students to, however, is. They're a good school, they're good principal and parents, but the fact remains, they're on probation. I've been told that this process is not about academics, it's about utilization. So let me answer that point. We have a comprehensive plan to combine the schools of Van Humble and Dupre. It is a plan that the hearing officer specifically said urges you to follow and look at. This plan is endorsed by the aldermen, the Clemente CAC, Representative Soto, Bickerdyke, the community principals, students and teachers. The only support it needs is from this Board of Education. We've already been a receiving school before. With success, Dupre can be a receiving school again. With the combination of Van Humble and Dupre and the CPC of Van Humble, which already has a 50-person waiting list for next year, we have a waiting list for our kindergarten, depending on the outcome of this hearing. We have, we were promised a blended program, and we're working with Casa Central to get a 60-student pipeline to our building. We can easily have close to 700 students just for next year alone. With marketing campaign, we were sure, of course, with the closings of schools, more will come. My family came from humble beginnings in the Chicago South Side. We valued education as a key to success, and I live in the city and work on the West Side to instill that in my students as well. Investment breeds success. I ask you to vote your conscience.
Mr. Roy.
Vote how, I understand.
Thank you.
I vote how, vote if these were your children, because these are your children. They're all of our children. We want to make sure that your children don't go to a school on probation, that they don't have to go to a school with 30 or more kids in a classroom. We want to make sure that you understand that my school doesn't have these things.
Mr. Roy, thank you. Our next speaker, please. Last call for Teri Sumra. Moving on to the next speaker, please. Sharon Taylor, speaker number eight, followed by speaker number nine, Kurt Hilgendorf, followed by speaker 10, Nina Stoner, and then speaker number 11, please, Ivan Johnson.
Good morning, everyone. As I sat and listened today, I struggled with what I really wanted to say. Coming from work 11:00 to 7:00 p.m. at night to 7:00 in the morning, I'm here today just to ask you, if you do not live in Inglewood, where I live, would you, since you say the things that you're doing is best for me and my kids, would you allow your kids to come to Inglewood and go to school? Where my babies go, Woods Academy, 62nd and Racine. Would you? My baby have to cross gang lines? My baby love her school. I love Woods, I'm also the vice president of the LSC. You're transitioning our school to going to Bass, who's been on probation for 17 years. One and one is two. So I'm not understanding how we're going. We have a functioning LSC. We have a functioning PAC, which deals with the parents. So, they do not have a functioning LSC, they do not have a PAC. So where's that money going? Who's spending that money? What is it being spent on if you do not have a functioning LSC? We have records, we keep records of what we're doing with our money, what's going on in our schools. We have after-school programs. As far as the safe haven program, we have, we can just walk in the back door of the police station, 61st and Racine. The new police station on 63rd and Lumens. We're right in their back doors. Before we can get our kids out of school, they're parking in our parking lots. They're parking at fire hydrants, they're parking at bus stops. They're not getting tickets. If the police department says they do not have a lot of money, they have money, they have money to house two 15-seater vans with two police officers to guard their own cars. They're not guarding my cars at night, they're watching their cars. So you tell me, what should I do?
Ms. Taylor, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, I'm gonna conclude. We have been petitioning, my principal, Rosalind Armour, has been petitioning the board to come and get three air conditioners out of one room, to give an air conditioner to each room. We have two air conditions in rooms. We have what you said that my baby needs, that they have to transition to Bass.
Ms. Taylor, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please. Last call for Kurt Hilgendorf, speaker number nine. Moving on to the next speaker, then, please. Speaker number 10, Nina Stoner, followed by speaker number 11, Ivan Johnson, and then followed by the speakers for the Dewey School. Speaker number 41, Kiva Brown, followed by speaker 55, Ladisa Stamps, and then speaker number 12, Matthew Johnson, please.
Hello. Hello, my name is Nina Stoner, I'm from West Pullman Elementary School. Good afternoon. CPS proposed the closing of West Pullman is effectively preventing our kids from getting a safe and decent education. CPS claims we made the list because, based on their inaccurate formula, our building is underutilized, and we do not have enough anything going on around the school. When in fact, if you wouldn't have rezoned our schools, we would, our schools would not be underutilized now. Had y'all poured money into improving our schools, supplying our teachers with needed supplies, teaching tools and resources for our students and families, our communities would be blossoming, and we would not be facing this made-up crisis CPS fo- Jesus. CPS forced on us. Another fact, our children are not trying to, we're not trying to let our kids cross into gang-tory boundaries that the families have been fighting over, have caused deaths. We're getting threats by Alex Haley's students, their parents, just as well as all the others. That's all I need to say, this is the part, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, our next speaker, please. Ivan Johnson.
Good afternoon. My name is Ivan Johnson, and I am a 1979-born graduate. A proud parent, and yet, a concerned parent. My child attends Noble Charter School. I found out about a charter school when he was in the eighth grade. His teacher recommended a charter school because his discipline. Of course, I applied. And I'm from the South Side, the nearest one was Gary Comer, and of course, it's a waiting list. So I applied the next nearest Comer school, well, Noble School, and that was Johnson College Prep in Inglewood. Of course, I did not want my son to go to Inglewood. But I tell you what, that was the best decision I ever made. My child is a new person. I saw a young man before my eyes learn to respect others, more importantly, himself. He is involved in all kind of activities. He played football, basketball, rugby, and I had never heard of rugby until he went to that school. He plays a sax in the band. He's in the ROTC Marine Corps. He received perfect attendance. He's on the honor roll, and all of that, he maintains a 4.21 GPA. I cannot be apologetic for the choices I made, the school and his success. More importantly, I see that the boys- Young men need to be more responsible and respectful and successful like my son.
Ms. Johnson, thank you for your comments, please. Our next speaker, then-
Thank you.
-will be speaker number 41, Kiva Brown, followed by speaker 55, Ladisa Stamps, and then Matthew Johnson. Once they address the board, the next group of speakers will be speaker number 14, please, Andrew Broi, followed by speaker 15, Valerie Nelson, and then speaker 16, Erica Clark, and 17, Albert Mendez.
Excuse me, ma'am, before you start, could I ask people in the audience to please respect our speakers? There's a lot of noise going on, and it really is disrespectful for those who are trying to communicate to us. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, good afternoon. I am a teacher at Dewey Elementary School, and first of all, I want to say thank you so much for taking Manir and also barring off of your list. Just like Manir, we have modules from Erickson Institute. We have a head teacher that has been matriculated at Erickson Institute. Just like Manir, we have programs, we have grants at our school that are helping the children learn. We have Safe Schools Pilot Program. We have Chicago Dating Matters. We also have the Children's Research Triangle for Social-Emotional Development and Learning. And we also have the Primary C Literacy Project Pilot for kindergarten through second grade. We have received valuable professional development. We have been, you all have invested in our learning, and we want to go ahead and make sure that our children are getting the learning and the professional development that we have gotten. Also, our children need stability. 80% of our staff is already turned around, and we are in place right now to help our students. The last thing they need is another turnaround. We've already turned the school around ourselves. If we are not turned around, the granted money that we've received for the CPC expansion program will still be there. So that's money that does not come out of your pockets, doesn't come out of the board's pockets. That's money that we have already secured. Our staff, again, is meeting the school's needs. And I am a National Board Certified candidate, and I was told by my mentor that Dewey Child Parents Center and Dewey Academy is an excellent place for an accomplished teacher to be matriculated. So please, please reconsider what you're going to do to Dewey. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, my name is Ladisa Stamps, and I am the proud LSC Vice Chair of Dewey Academy Fine Arts. I am here today representing 300 families at Dewey. We respectfully oppose the opposition to reconstruct our school. The members of our boards, our teachers, our principals, our parents, and our community share the same belief as CEO. We are committed to ensure that every child at our school receives a high-quality education that will help them be successful in college, careers, and in life. Members of the board, you ensured, you voted on ensuring that the receiving schools receive the same resources for children that, so that they can receive excellent academically. We also at Dewey did the same thing for the past three years. We voted to use discretionary funds so that our staff would receive the same necessary resources for our children to receive high-qualified educations. Dewey has a full-day preschool and kindergarten. Dewey has art, music, gym, two tech labs, iPads, smartboards, laptops, and no additional cost to you, to the board. We asked, why weren't we even considered to be a receiving school? The members of our board, our principal, Mr. Dockery, is the fifth in a 13-month period. Our children have, can't be overhauled, and our staff be affected by this, even though they've started to rebuild, and 30% of our staff in the last, in the first and second year of their employment here at Dewey. Members of the board, we ask that you, for additional time, so that we finish where we started. We have made continual growth in math and reading in the ASAP test. We ask that you give us an additional year or two years to allow us to continue the reform that we already started.
Thank you, Ms. Stamps. Our next speaker, please, Matthew Johnson, speaker number 12.
Good afternoon, President, Mr. Vitale, CEO, Ms. Bobby Bird Bennett, and all other board members. My name is Matthew Johnson, I'm the proud local school council chairperson at Dewey Academy of Fine Arts. I've been the chair for the last eight years. CEO, Ms. Bobby Bird Bennett, I respect you and your commitments to ensure that every child receive a high-quality education. I share the same belief. I believe those that are responsible for our children not receiving a high-quality education be held accountable, starting with me as a parent. I refuse to stand here and complain about how our network refused to invest in Dewey like they did all the other schools in the network. Mr. Simon Five-Step Assistant Dewey Plan, it didn't involve one key stakeholder, and it was in his binder, and that's the LSC. Board members, I am asking you to carefully evaluate the turnaround proposal for Dewey School. Dewey may need some additional support, but not support that prevent us from finishing the reforms that are already being implemented at Dewey. Board members, please review AUSL approach, and then review Dewey Plan. Dewey Plan is almost similar to AUSL Plan. But the difference is, Dewey Plan is no additional cost to you, the board members. Dewey, Dewey have over 31 different partners that's already committed to work with Dewey. Dewey has a rigorous curriculum already. Dewey has 80% of new staff in their first and second year already at Dewey, a part of our turnaround model. And these staff is committed to make sure all of our students excel in academics. We're asking for, we're asking you for more time to finish what we have already started. The positive trend, please let the positive trend continue. In 2009-
Mr. Johnson, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, I will conclude. In 2009, AUSL Executive Director Don Feinstein described the role of families in turnaround process as follow. "As we rebirth schools, we give parents the opportunity to finally say, 'Well, this is the way, this should happen, and if you really want to get things right, hear our voice.'" Board members, please hear our voice.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our next speaker, please, is speaker number 14, Andrew Broi, followed by speaker 15, Valerie Nelson.
Good afternoon, Andrew Broi, head of the Illinois Network of Charter Schools. Today is a difficult day for the city of Chicago. As a city, we've spent the past six months engaged in a passionate debate about the future of public education. But today's vote has the potential to usher in a new era of possibility for Chicago. I say potential only because it's up to us to ensure we meet the obligation we have to our neighborhoods. Those of us who have engaged as competing factions over the past six months need to come together now after this vote to make sure schools improve and get better and serve our neighborhoods. I'm ultimately hopeful that will happen. Why? Because I know the citizens of Chicago want that to happen, and I know we can make it happen. Just two weeks ago, during INX's 8th Annual Lobby Day, we took 600 charter school parents to Springfield to meet with their elected officials and representatives. Away from the rhetoric and away from the controversy, these parents excelled. They explained as only they can why public education is the future and is the opportunity for our city. Keep in mind, these parents awoke at 6:00 a.m., took a day off of work, went to Perspectives Charter School, boarded buses, and came back at 8 o'clock at night, all to tell their message about what the future means in the city of Chicago. That choice deserves respect. They have held 95 individual legislator meetings in Springfield during that time, talking about their choice. Today, you'll hear from a number of charter school parents. Please listen to them. Earlier, we heard from an alderman who claimed that the only people supporting charter schools are wealthy foundations.
Mr. Broi, excuse me, can you please conclude?
I will.
Thank you.
I have 53,000 reasons why that's wrong. 53,000 parents and families have chosen charter schools. That's up from 30,000 just five years ago. Charters are part of the solution, the parent choices deserve respect. We're here to support that, but we also commit to working with the city and all of our neighborhoods to make schools better.
Thank you, Mr. Broi, our next speaker, please, Valerie Nelson.
My name is Valerie Nelson. I'm the LSC Chair at Lafayette. I'm also a proud member of Stanford Children. Because of the strong social-emotional learning in our school for special-needs children, I've been supporting Lafayette during these school actions. By now, you've heard our talented orchestra. However, I'm here to tell you that CPS, CTU, and we, the parents, should do better for our children. My perspective on this entire school closing process was shaken in April when I visited Cassals and AUSL Turnaround School. Cassals and Lafayette have similar children and face similar challenges. Yet Cassals' kids were behaving and learning at a level I haven't seen at Lafayette. The LSC Chair at Cassals told us that last year that she was the biggest opponent of the turnaround, and now she's the biggest advocate because the school has improved. I left Cassals thinking, what am I fighting for? What do I really want for my children at Lafayette? I've marched, gone to Springfield, spoken at rallies, all for the purpose of saving my school, but the question we've been raising could be better. It's like we've been fighting for McDonald's fries, and yes, they are delicious, and I'm loving it, but what our kids need is Whole Foods. That's why I decided to become a member of Stanford Children, stand as a parent organization that works respectively and constructively to ensure, to ensure all schools are places where kids are safe in learning. I've been told by those who oppose closing schools that turnarounds and charters are evil. But at Cassals, I saw real learning, whereas Lafayette's been on Level 3 for some years. My greatest wish is that we could bring the academics that AUSL brings to the family environment at Lafayette. So I asked the board to vote so that every child is a part of a better school, that you invest in Lafayette School and others, like you have in Cassals, and that you continue to work in good faith with parent groups like Stanford Children. Thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker, please, is Erica Clark, speaker number 16.
Hello, everyone, my name's Erica Clark. I'm a CPS parent. I'm here to say that I, although my children do not attend any of the schools that are being closed, I'm here to say that I am opposed to every single school action, school closing, school turnaround on this list. Because as a- Because as a parent, as a mother, every Chicago public school is my school. Alt-Geld is my school. Armstrong is my school. Addix is my school. Banneker is my school. Bethune is my school. Bon Temps is my school. Buckingham is my school. Calhoun North is my school. Kanter is my school. Delano is my school. Dumas is my school. De Dupre is my school. Emmett is my school. Erickson is my school. Fermi is my school. Garfield Park is my school, and Garvey is my school. Goldblatt is my school. Henson is my school. Herbert is my school. Goodlow is my school. Key is also my school. King is my school. Cone is my school. Lafayette is my school. Lawrence is my school. Manir is my school. Jackson is my school. Marconi is my school. Mayo is my school. Morgan is my school. May is my school. Near North is my school. Overton is my school. Owens is my school. Paderewski is my school. Parkman is my school. Peabody is my school.
Excuse me, Ms. Clark, can you please conclude?
Pershing West is my school. Pope is my school.